Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, their motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any corrections, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
We don't seem to have a copy of the minutes.
Can I make a motion, we table that until next week?
Guess you'll have to, yep. Yep, certainly.
So moved.
Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor table it until next meeting, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Police Department update, Chief.
Hey, got your report, I also gave you the revenue changes.
Oh, I got that.
But if you go through any questions on the calls for service, we've been really averaging, you know, over 350 a month, so nothing really stands out. Accidents really about stayed the same. At the end of November, we had that snowfall, we had a lot of vehicles off the road at that time. Total arrests, we're down a half, 12 to 6. I don't think that tells you anything. Traffic violations, off a little bit. There's a campaign going on now, so you'll see a lot more enforcement. Any questions on any of that stuff? Although, we did an increase in our parking tickets, as you see in November because of the winter ban, so. You know what's ironic, with those people actually paying those, you'll have any issues with parking tickets.
Well, they're not horribly-
I haven't told anybody, which is good.
They're not horribly expensive, are they Pete?
No, they're funny.
Why is it speeding up just because you've been doing more patrols? I mean, more.
What's that like?
The speeding violations are quite a bit.
Yeah, well, there was a couple campaigns in November, we're in the middle of a campaign now till January 2nd, so there'll be extra enforcement going on this year. There's actually a checkpoint this party, not here, but. You can see the change of the revenue, they finally got that scored away, so that is up the screen. Calls for service to the university, we're down about four from 12 to 8. And that stuff that goes on, and we'll recall that going on campus, that doesn't include the all-campus stuff. And then you see the backup provided by us. Backup here doing quite a bit. And if you look for this state. And then our tow vehicle report, we towed a lot of vehicles in November, I was during that, those walls. And you can just see somewhere on rotation, somewhere, oh, operator's request.
Well, I'd like to thank you for having this all well documented, so that if and when the issue's raised again, we have the documentation we need to alleviate any theories or accusations that aren't true.
Yeah, I'm just working out, it's a little extra work, but doesn't disprove that.
I'll tell them that I thank him and the board thanks him.
And any questions on the report?
Joe?
Well, I was just gonna say, Chief, I would find it helpful if you could provide maybe a year's worth of the backup relative to Fairhaven. I know in any given month, sometimes it's this way, sometimes it's that way, but apparently we're up kind of a net of 10 this month, and I think most months we've been on the plus side. I'd just like to see a year's worth, a calendar year's worth of data, if you wouldn't mind assembling that.
Yeah, I mean, do you want us to try to go back, or just go from starting where we started documenting this going forward, or would you rather have it from the next time?
Well, I know you've been providing this for the last-
Couple months, three months.
Whatever it is, if you could just compile the last, since you started doing this.
Okay. Yeah.
It's okay, other questions? If not, thank you, Chief. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not done.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
Does the Castleman Police Department, do you Facebook your arrests and stuff?
No.
You don't have any plans of doing that in the future?
Nope.
Okay.
Matter of fact, if you look, I have probably 99% of the time, unless it's a high-profile case, I'll be able to release on it. Yeah, that's been a big thing, we did have a chief's meeting this last Wednesday, the whole thing happened up in Burlington. And I don't have Twitter accounts, I have a Facebook, I keep it for my kids early, and I'm never on it. Nobody in my department has, I think somebody does have an Instagram, but I think it's private. I don't monitor those. Do we, we're not doing fake names or anything like that. You know, in the chief's meeting, we were talking about, you know, number one, I don't know where chiefs get enough time to be able to do that, spend how many hours on the Twitter, on the fake Twitter, kind of do all that kind of stuff. You know, it's not good. I'd rather, to me, that's not transparent. You know, people have issues, I have issues with people who face-to-face, try not to use the media. People low-profile.
Appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Chief.
Back to citizens' comments, items not on the agenda? Guys are on the agenda. Okay. Seeing none. Can we do the Lions Club and Fairhaven Rotary, these are routine. Requests, the fishing derby, Lions Club, 215 and 216 of 2020, and Fairhaven Rotary the following weekend, 222 and 223, request to use Crystal Beach.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second, any discussion?
They're providing the town with their insurance certificates and all that, right, Mike?
I'm assuming you've got that already?
Yeah.
You just didn't, okay.
They have to update them, so.
Okay. If that's all handled, then I'm good with it.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Source protection plan, Mike?
They're not here, Chairman, so I can't speak for them, and I nor do I want to. Somebody from Fire District 1 is not, didn't show up tonight, so.
Okay.
They want to talk to the select board about enforcement, and subsequent to my conversation with them, Jonas has a copy of the, our ordinances where we already have water source protection in there, so that was one of the things they want to talk to them about, was enforcement of that source protection area, and there was some other things, but I don't want to get into it, because I'll miss, I don't want to misspeak, so maybe we should table it until they can be here.
Okay. Their motion, yes, Joe?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think it's an important issue, and it's kind of an unusual system we have of overseeing municipal water and the other matters of the town. I would hope this wouldn't drop. I would, you know, I'd like us to take the initiative to have a conversation with the fire district about their concerns and about what can be done.
I agree with Joe too, because I listened to what Chris had to say, and there's also some issues with the map, it's not a problem. What I asked for was the map of where the aquifer is, because what I was told, that it extends up onto East Hubbardan Road, towards where Rutland Marble and Granite is, that's also been zoned industrial. So I talked to Chris about it, and I said, that seems like a bad place to zone industrial on top of an aquifer, depending on what goes in there, but, and to include solar arrays. So there's, I guess I can't speak for them, and I agree that it shouldn't get pushed down the road too far, but we did reach out to Chris by phone, leave him messages, and nobody's here to speak for them, so we'll just keep, I mean, if I have to go drive and find him, he usually stops in every couple weeks, but that's my opinion on it.
So was he aware that he was on the agenda tonight?
We told him we would get him on the agenda, because he kept, what he kept saying to me was, it's yours, and he's talking about me, and I said, I am not a legislative, part of the legislative body, you need to talk to the select board with your concerns, so.
Well, I would suggest two things, one that we, you know, actually pick a date, whatever it be, maybe it's the first one in January, if we have the time on the agenda, you know, talk to Jim and make sure it'll fit, and actually invite the prudential board from both fire districts, or at least this is Fire District 1. And then in addition to that, if that map could be acquired prior to that meeting, and also if we all had copies of the ordinance, that would be probably helpful as well.
Yeah, I just got it today, so I can make copies for you, but-
Well, it's nothing we need right this minute, I'm just thinking before we have the meeting, if we're, you know, be as prepared as possible.
Can Ray Latt speak to it?
This first, I'd heard about this, being somebody's supposed to be here, but I am on the board.
He's on the board.
Yeah, I called, I talked to Kerry, well, I left Kerry a message, I didn't talk to Kerry, but I did call Chris, because he's the chairman of the board, so, and we left him, but when you call us home, it doesn't say how you've reached a name, it just is an automated message, so we made an assumption, Karen and I both called, and that we were talking to his answer machine, which may have been a bad assumption.
All right, doesn't seem that-
There's the phone in the office.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I can talk to you about that one later.
Okay. There's no need for a motion to table anything, because there's nothing to discuss till they come in, and we can hear what they have to say. So with that saying, you want to move on to the, oh, wait a minute, move on to the warning? Everybody's had a chance to read the warning, this is without some of the petitions that will be coming in. Any motion on the warning, the portion of it that we have?
Yeah, it doesn't even say on this, where we're presented, that there's a caveat in there that petitions to be received will be added below.
Yep, that's on there.
So I would make a motion that we approve the warning as presented to date.
Second.
Is that a second, Zach?
Yeah, second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just wondering what the deadline is for the petitions?
January, I want to say 12th, Bob, but don't hold that to me. Nedra was talking the other day, but that's about that timeframe.
Isn't it a Monday? They're due on a Monday at 5:00?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what it is.
Joe?
Just a couple of questions. Am I, I think that between Article 19 and Article 20, based on the budget we reviewed at our last meeting, there was an item related to the town office, Mike, is that?
Yeah.
Is that in here somewhere else, or did that just get dropped out?
No, that's in here.
Are you talking about the creation and then contribution to the capital reserve fund for the town office?
No.
In which case that would be later on.
Article 54.
Yeah, Article 51.
54, I think.
No.
Back here somewhere.
Yep.
54 and 55.
So I was just working through the budget that we reviewed, and everything pretty much seemed to be in order, except for the town office item.
And if it was, I'm not sure off the top of my head what that town office issue was, but if it was talking about that line for the reserves, then that was at the end of it.
This was an item that fell in your budget after total community development, economic revitalization, and it was a total town office budget item for 35050.
Would you mind if I looked at what you're looking at?
Is that included, Joe, in 194K for general government buildings?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So this is, this is what seems to be missing.
So that, that line right there is all of the line above it. This, the only thing here was the $1,000 for the repair, for the, going towards the reserve, which was changed, I think Dick made the motion to put seed money in that from the remaining surplus, right? So this 35 is all of those lines, plus that, so that's what that is.
My question is, where is it in the warning?
Oh.
See?
Under general government business?
Here is, you know, just going, moving down the line here, we've got this item here, and then the next item is general government buildings, but the town office falls between, and maybe I-
So general, general government buildings, town office.
May I see that for a second, Joe? I didn't bring my copy. I think I have a theory, but I need to look at it first.
General government buildings, town office.
194, 950.
So clearly, the 35,000 is not in there.
Well, maybe somewhere else, but I didn't, I couldn't see-
No, that's, that's in the 194K, because the general government buildings is a total-
It's a total of-
Of the town office building, which was 35K, and the public safety building, which is 159K, for a total of 194.
Right.
So it is in there, Joe.
Thank you.
But I don't have a problem with someone watching our back.
And then there were just a lot of small adjustments.
Okay.
Sometimes just a few dollars. Those don't bother me, but I'm sure you have explanation for that. Article 26 is $2,000, under 27 is $2,000, under 29, Hillside Cemetery is $1,000 over. I don't have a problem with those, but I assume that you made some fine-tuning adjustments.
I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at your sheet to now compare them, but as far as the historical cemeteries, it's 4,000, is that what it shows on the budget, was 4,000? For this, this new, the new one that was coming up?
Historical cemeteries is the same, that didn't change.
Okay.
It was town lands and hillside that were on, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Where's hillside? Oh, because hillside, I think when I made the hillside, I didn't realize that every year they went up a little bit, and I didn't know the history behind it, so that's why that $1,000 is different.
Yeah, we made a deal with them several years ago to increase it $1,000 a year.
No one probably caught that, because I wasn't aware that there was a deal for that, every year it increases.
Anything else?
And the other one you said was-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Which was town lands?
Yeah.
It's like $200 difference.
$200.
Yeah, my assumption is that the bottom line is the same.
Yeah, without going back and looking at Joe, I don't know.
You said 2,000, though.
Well, but there are, there are a couple places where it's 2,000 plus or minus.
2,000 is bad. If there's 2,000, I would like to fix that.
That was the highway department you were talking about.
But recreation is down 1,000, the transfer station is just, it's almost the same, Constables is down 2,000, so it looked to me, just eyeballing it, as though there were enough pluses and minuses that the bottom line would be the same.
I don't want to guarantee that. I know that there were some changes to the constables in the car, so the only thing I could do is go print out the one that's online, that's the one that's, we should be going by, and I could tell you.
Who was proofread this, Mike?
We all did, to be honest with you.
Okay, because typically, yeah, in the past, there was like three or four sets of eyes on this.
Yeah, we did. No one did, Karen did, and I did. I didn't do, I didn't do the dollar ones, I did the spreadsheet online, and so I didn't, I didn't write these in there myself. So I'd have to look against that spreadsheet to see if there is a, just a keystroke error, if there really was a change on those three or four items that you found.
Well, do, I think what Joe is basically saying is, is it fair to assume that the increase would be 2.5%?
Yeah, a couple thousand dollars and not a certain amount of change in percentage.
That's what we voted on, yeah. Okay.
But if you're going to approve this warning, and it's different than what we've got in a spreadsheet, it's not accurate, but how do you want me to?
How do you want to handle it?
I can go, tonight I can look at it, but if you want to, you know, what I'm gonna do is go and look what's online.
It would be more convenient for the town staff to have this approved now.
Yep.
But it doesn't actually have to be approved until the first meeting in January, correct?
Well, I mean, while you guys are talking about Balker and Son memorials, I can go look at that.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
It'll take me 10 minutes at most.
Let's let Michael get the-
We can move on to something else?
While you're talking with Ray and Ken about the-
Let me give you my, I've got about half a dozen places where I found discrepancy between the spreadsheet I had last meeting and this, these warnings.
Okay.
I'll give you that. I also had a question, Mr. Chairman, about the, was it Article 40 to 49, the, these are based on petitions, I think, are those, have we approved those before, or are we approving those tonight, that is putting those on the-
40?
Or are they not, yeah, 40 to 49, I think.
Okay.
That's like ARC, BROP, et cetera.
Well, yeah, the, the ones that I believe we approve are the ones that are level funded. If a, if a organization wants to increase it, then they have to file a new petition. Since there are no new petitions filed, I believe it's reasonable to assume that the amount is the same. Is that correct, Mike?
It is, and there's some, like, I gave you two letters last time of what we had, so there was no increase to them, so they don't have to do another petition.
It was five or six years ago that we either created an ordinance or a policy, I don't recall which it was, but, and the board decided that they did not need to circulate a new petition every year if they weren't changing the-
The amount.
The amount, because it's been petitioned and approved for 20 years.
Right.
Did we all saw at that same time, after a three-year period or five-year period, say that they did have to petition again?
I honestly don't recall, Bob, what exactly we did.
I don't recall either, but I don't think so.
I think there was at least three of us on the board at the time.
I wasn't, I wasn't on the board at the time.
Okay, well, there's at least two of us that were on the board then, and I honestly don't recall the specifics of that. I know that we worked it out, I believe, it could have been Charles was the town manager at the time.
No, Mark.
Was it Mark? Were you on the board?
No, I was at the meeting, though.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember what the policy was that y'all voted on.
I don't, I don't-
That was a time period, after three years, you had to hear from them.
I don't recall there being a time period, doesn't mean there isn't one, but.
The other question is, is all these, in years past, and all these have already put in that that's what they want on the warning? Usually, we have to pick up the phone and call them like the middle of January.
Some sent letters, so Karen, Karen has a pile of letters.
I'm just shocked that all these have already responded to us by this time. That would be a first ever.
Well, I can't guarantee that they've all, that we have a letter from all of them.
Oh, so you just took the amounts from last year, and just assuming that they want us on the warning?
And there was, we only got three letters that came in, so we can verify three, but even last year, I don't remember calling any of those places last year, I was told, I think Jill was here at the time, said, no, we put them on there, and if they want any different money, they gotta go out and get a petition, so I kind of left it at that. If you want to change it, let me know how you want to change it, and I will do so.
Someone want to change it?
Well, I'd be interested to know what the decision was five years ago, or so, whenever it was made, but it seems preferable to me to require that the agencies request that they be on the ballot, as opposed to-
I would agree with, I think Bob raises a good point, and I agree with you, Joe, that they should at least have the, put the effort in to make the request.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think it's a good point about that.
Given what we appear to have some degree of confusion, perhaps it'd be best just to wait until the next meeting on the 9th, which is, which is, I believe it's well before the deadline. You can't have it both ways, either you have to prove it, or make changes and move on.
So we have money discrepancies, and then we have on the articles, 40 through 49.
Right, so what would you like to do?
Find out.
Can I withdraw my motion, or, Mr. Parliamentarian, can I withdraw my motion, or do we have the room to table it, or?
No, you can-
I'll withdraw my motion.
As long as the second agrees to that.
Yeah, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, motion is second, then withdrawn.
So I do have a request to the town manager, though. If you could provide us with a copy of what we as a board decided to do many moons ago.
All right.
That would be, I know you need one more thing to do, but-
No, I just, I gotta start looking for where it's at, because it's not something I was here, so I can't, I don't know who made it, but-
I believe it was back during the time when John Hale was a member of the board.
That's, you're right.
Is that-
He's the, he's the one who-
Instigated it?
Instigated it, drafted it.
Drafted the policy.
Okay.
And that would have been either spring of 15 or spring of 16.
Okay.
Well, if I've been on the board, John was on the board for the first year or two that I was, and I've been, I'm just completing my sixth year, if that helps any.
Yes, Joe?
One last question. There's an item on the warning related to the dredging of the delta at Sucker Brook.
Yeah.
I guess what I was wondering was whether that is something that we would do within the next fiscal year, or something that might be so expensive that we would need to accumulate funds to do it at a later point.
Yeah, I talked to Laura Dugalecki, this is not cheap. I did talk to our assessor, and there's a limited number of organizations that do this kind of thing, so I don't have an answer on the total cost of it. We did, the town did apply for a permit to do the work, we just don't, we need to hire somebody to come in and do a consulting on it, and say, this is what needs to be done, and this is what it's going to cost.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is that if we approve this warning with that article as it stands, and it turns out the price tag is way beyond the $18,000 that's in here, do we have procedures for carrying that forward to accumulate the necessary funds?
Before the end of the fiscal year, because, so we don't go back into the argument about what, you'd have to make a motion to carry that over to the next year.
Yeah.
Now, it doesn't mean we couldn't do something with Sucker Brook, though.
Yeah.
The money for the stabilization of the bank, 18 grand, would probably do some good on that, but as far as the dredging goes, I don't have an answer yet, because I, we haven't had somebody come in to look at it. Not going to be cheap, no doubt, but-
I guess I'm fine with the article as it's written, then.
Okay. One other article that you may want to think about, I believe there was some discussion at the last meeting about adding an article to either opt-in or opt-out, the sale of recreational marijuana in town? Do you wish, is there any consideration of adding that?
I don't think it's a bad idea, just to get the public's opinion on it.
Well, I think that was the discussion, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
If I recall, if we do nothing, we have that, we have to choose to opt-out.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
And if we don't opt-out, we're not committed to anything anyways.
Then you're opting in if you're not opting out.
Right, if you don't, if you don't express interest in opting out, you're automatically opting in.
What are we opting into, though?
But that doesn't commit us to-
That's the question, it's very vague.
If I remember reading that, it really didn't commit us to anything.
Do we not want the opinion of the public, though? Whether they want that in their town or not?
Sure.
That's what, that's what- That's just for the vote.
That's what the discussion was about, whether it should be a decision of the voters.
Is this, would this be a binding vote?
I would hope so, if the voters are voting on it, it'd be binding however they voted.
Right.
I'd hate to sit here and say the voters have voted one thing, and we're going to overrule the voters, or any board is, but that's up to you.
So do we need a motion to add that article, or should we just direct the manager to draft language related to it?
You could draft the language and present it at the next meeting, if you're so inclined to do that.
Right, and then we're going to approve the warning at the next meeting, correct?
Definitely.
With all the corrections and additions and-
Yep, yep, yep.
At least the town's portion of it, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You'll have to wait till the deadline for the petitions.
Anything else on that? Okay, move on to Balker and Son Memorial quotes. We have a quote from Balker and Son Memorials.
Jim, I'm sorry, so were you going to make a motion regarding?
What?
No, no motion regarding-
What?
The adding of the article, or the town manager, okay.
We just directed-
Directed it in.
We just directed Mike to draft the language.
Okay. Okay, the quote from Balker and Son Memorials, quote for straightening eleven memorials at the old burial ground cemetery. Monuments will also be cleaned after being straightened. Total amount's nine thousand dollars. The work would not start until, of course, the spring of 2020.
One thing, Chairman, on that, one of the things missing on this is the backside. So you guys know, I talked to Mr. Ladd, and he gave me the names of two other vendors that he called, and they turned the job down. So...and it was on the backside of this, just didn't get copied. So he did go to the three vendors, like our bid policy estates.
Yes.
It says unlike copy thirteen memorials.
Yeah, you said eleven, Jim.
I'm sorry, thirteen.
Thank you.
Thanks for the correction. Is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. We approve the bid from Balker and Son Memorials in the amount of nine thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, second, discussion?
Will I do it, Ray? We'll get you started, Ray.
It's got to be done.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing, Ray, was the thousand dollars that's remaining would be for fence, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
This would probably be for the...
Lincoln, Hubbard one?
The Lincoln Cemetery up the east Hubbard Road, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion passed. Managers update.
Pending your questions, gentlemen.
Preservation Trust Fund, Preservation Trust Fund. I did ask the accountant today if we had made a donation in the past, and her answer was not that she's aware of. So we've had the opportunity to read the letter and also a description of the various works that they do. What would you like to do?
I'm not inclined to take any action on this.
Okay. Got a motion? Got a motion?
Necessary.
I don't think it's necessary if we're not taking any...
The only option that I would consider would be to put an article on the warning and give the citizens of the town the opportunity to decide whether they would support this.
Would you put an amount on it?
Honestly, it doesn't feel right to me that towns would support a nonprofit of this nature.
Well, if we don't take any action, then maybe we don't need a motion.
My opinion is we do not, and I agree with Joe that I'm inclined to not set the precedent of supporting a nonprofit of this nature.
I don't know. That's only two opinions out of forty-six hundred people in town. Why wouldn't we just put it on the ballot and just...
We only have, what is it, close to sixty items there?
Yeah, well, I know, but...
There'll be some tired people in the voting booth.
And how do they get educated on this? That's another question.
Yeah, how are we going to get educated on it? Yeah.
Okay, Zach?
I don't know enough about the nonprofit to have an opinion one way or the other.
Okay, so I'm not hearing anyone on the board suggest that we do this at this time. If I'm incorrect, please state it.
I really don't know what we're doing, yeah.
Okay, want to just pass on it? Okay.
I guess for this time, yeah.
All right, managers update. Mike?
Hi, gentlemen, good evening. I'm going to slide this going that way. This was the draft of the cover for the town report. The Castleton days is outside of the reporting period, so that split one that we talked about is irrelevant, because it will be on next year's, because that happened in September, and that closed as of thirty June. So that has the sailing program, basically, is what it is.
So what are the two pages here, Mike? Cover and...
There's a little story about it.
Second page is story.
Okay.
Jim Lamy's mentioned ten times in it.
No, we can only mention Jim nine times. That's the limit, Jim, nine.
On the report, the private hauler stuff, I told you last month about the gathering information for the...to be able to determine what it costs to get rid of garbage. So Bob, I printed out this for you, just so you know what I was asking for, what I... Before I...before we go into that hauler stuff, I'd really like to hear your opinion on that.
Thank you.
Is everything that I asked for for information, I'd like you to look at it.
Sure.
And I can give...I can email to the rest of the board members. It's basically, I'm asking for, from Melanie, all this information to determine how much it costs to get rid of garbage at the transfer station, and I want to make sure I'm including all of our costs.
Good.
So I'm not prepared to go into the private hauler stuff with you, because we can't tell you how much it costs to get rid of garbage to determine what you want to do with it. I thought it was pretty simple, but I guess it's not, about whether or not he should turn in his roster twice a year. That was the whole gist behind that, is shall he turn in his roster as the ordinance says? And we're...I guess we're going down this rabbit hole, but I know Bob's been asking for it for a long while, so I want to give him an accurate product, or the board an accurate product. But it still goes back to that question of, do you want the private haulers? We have one right now, but we could potentially get more in the future to turn in their customer list twice a year.
It seems that when we met with the hauler, he indicated that he was...had about twelve, as I recall it, twelve customers that were not either in Hubbardon or Castleton. So you know the situation. Do you want the hauler or haulers in the future to continue to turn in their customer list?
Well, I have a question, and probably Bob can answer this, maybe.
Well, let's get a motion, then we'll...get a motion, then we'll handle the questions.
Make a motion to require the haulers to turn in their customer list? I don't know if it's necessary twice a year, but at least once a year.
Once a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. All right, go ahead, Dick.
All right, my question was, and I know this has been asked and answered, but I don't remember the answer, is what we needed the customer list for, there was a valid reason for it many moons ago, but I honestly don't recall what that valid reason was.
I don't know what it was years ago, but I know now, I think we need to have an idea of, out of the X amount of tons up to our transfer station, how much is Hubbardon's and how much is Castleton's? And the only way you're going to get to that is if we know what Ed is bringing in. If he brings in a hundred customers, and fifty are from Castleton and fifty are from Hubbardon, and he brings in a hundred tons, and you know fifty tons are coming from Hubbardon, fifty tons are coming from Castleton. That's the only reason I want to see the customer list. I don't care if he picks up John Doe, Jim Doe, and Bob Doe. I want to see the number of Hubbardon customers versus the number of Castle customers.
Well, isn't the question, is not whether they're Hubbardon or Castleton. If they are, they're covered, but if they're Sudbury or Fairhaven or wherever, in other words, if they're outside this district, isn't that really the question where...that this tries to address? Joe?
And the question that I have is, and this may be Bob's question in part, what is the cost per ton of our...what are our costs per ton for the people who, like me, bring their bags to the dumpster? And how does that relate to the cost at the scale? And if the costs at the scale are equal to or greater than the cost for the plastic bag people, I don't have a problem and I don't need a list. And I don't care where the trash is coming from, as long as our system can handle the volume.
Any other comments?
I just disagree with that partly.
That's okay.
I still feel that we need to know what portion is Castleton's garbage and what portion is Hubbardon's garbage.
Bob, just so I can do the best I can on this, what is the purpose? Is it going to be what we assess Hubbardon? Is it to determine what we're assessing there?
Are they not paying their fair share? Are they paying twice as much as they should be paying?
Yeah.
That's basically what it boils down to for me.
So we're going to have to make a kind of a assumption that all garbage bags weigh the same, because we're going to...it just...I guess we can't get into the how much these bags weigh, how much these bags weigh, because...
No, you don't need to.
It's going to be just an overall total divided by a percentage of customers.
Yeah, if he brings in a thousand pounds, and he has sixty customers from Castleton and forty, then it's sixty-forty. I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. You're going to get pretty close by...at least as far as the one commercial hauler that we have.
Because right now, if I...talking with our accountant, we're using 2010 census data, because we just sent them their assessment. We're using their population of Hubbardon as how we determined the percentage that they're paying.
So you're assuming that every person in Hubbardon is bringing their stuff up there one way or another?
As we do with the census data in Castleton.
Yeah, that's not really accurate.
No, it's not. It's a kind of a flawed way of doing business, and I certainly...I'm obviously not going to solve it tonight, but I think it definitely needs a good...to lay this out and really look at it for the future of how we're doing it, because I've been here now a year and a half, and it's just not...it's not a good system.
It's not clean.
Well, I mean, what is the harm, Mr. Lamy? What is the harm in how we're providing this customer list?
I don't have any problem.
And I don't care about the names. We don't want to see the names.
No.
We just want to know number of Castle customers versus number Hubbardon customers.
No, that's not...well, that's not the intent of it. The intent of it was, and somebody can't correct me, it wasn't Hubbardon and Castleton. It was garbage being brought by commercial haulers from outside Hubbardon and Castleton. And that's where the lone hauler said, "I have twelve, approximately twelve customers who do not reside in either Castleton or Hubbardon." The other part is good information, no question about it, but that's not what this is about. This is just about...I believe that was the purpose years ago, when the board, whoever it was at that time, said to...and there were more than one hauler, then turn in your list so we're sure you're bringing it from Hubbardon and Castleton. That's all.
I believe that's the reason why that was crafted that way. It was twenty or thirty years ago.
Yeah, I guess it was a long time ago, yeah.
And if I recall, our one hauler that we have left has declined to cooperate with this ordinance. And so our question was, do we want to continue to try to enforce it, in which case he wouldn't be allowed to bring trash to our transfer station? Or do we change the policy?
Yeah. Anything else on this?
Was the reason this was all being discussed, Bob?
Yeah.
And I still think that's a valid question to have answered.
Just a second.
But if it's as simple as all we really need to know is what the ratios are, then I think Ed has already said he would cooperate with that, or Mr. Bulge.
And what you said, Mike, is it's imperative we find out if he's paying X amount of dollars per ton, is that covering it? Is it not covering it? Are we losing every ton that he brings in? That's imperative.
Where I wasn't...I was almost done.
Oh, sorry.
I would suggest, then, that we just simply change the ordinance to ask our private haulers the quantity of customers they have in the two towns and the ones that are not in town. And then you still have the data you need. He doesn't give up what he considers private information.
That's fine.
And everyone's happy, and he's in compliance with our ordinance, and we don't have to be, you know, what's...I can't think of the right polite word, but the word that comes to mind starts with hard. You know, we don't have to be unpleasant about it, you know? And we can get the data we need, and he's happy, and...
We can all work together on this.
Yeah, and so I think that would be a reasonable compromise, and that may be just as simple as all we need to do is change the ordinance to reflect the data that we really actually need.
Okay, Zach?
Why does that information matter to us? As long as we're making, you know, whatever our profit is, if any, you know, as long as we're making that, why does it matter where those customers reside? I don't understand the logistics behind it, maybe.
Are you talking about where they reside? Could they reside in Fairhaven or Sudbury or...is that what you're saying?
Outside the district, why does it matter? As long as, say, it costs us a hundred dollars a ton, we're charging a hundred and twenty, as long as we're making money on, you know, the disposal of their trash, why does it matter whether they come from Fairhaven or Castleton, Hubbardon, Sudbury, wherever?
Well, it matters to a taxpayer like me, because I don't want twice the much tonnage coming into our transfer station, and it's going to wear out a truck that much faster. Then you're going to have a second truck. You see what I'm saying? It could be blown out of proportion, you know?
Oh, okay, but that's where that profit is coming in.
Well, we're not in the business to make a profit, Zach.
Okay.
We can cover our costs.
Okay, Joe?
Zach essentially said what I would want to say, that is, I'd like to know the...our cost per ton and our charges at the scale per ton.
That's what this is right here, yeah.
I do have something I'd like to respond to, Zach, please.
Go ahead.
What we don't want, and I think Bob will agree with this, but you can speak for yourself, what we don't want is we don't want an outfit like Ace or Casella hauling trash from Polte, Fairhaven, Orwell, wherever, and dumping it at our transfer station, because we really don't have the capacity to handle that.
That's what this is all about.
Okay.
That's all about.
You said it smoother than what I said, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, okay.
So that's what we're trying to avoid, and that's what this was originally all about.
Okay, so we had a motion to have hauler or any haulers provide us with a list once a year. That's the way I believe it was phrased, and there was a second. Any other discussion?
Just a point of order.
Sure.
How does that relate to our existing ordinance?
Can we make a motion? Is what, twice a year? Twice a year?
We just changed it from twice a year.
Can we make that change without a change in the ordinance?
I would probably say no.
That would be my inclination as well.
Because if it's in the ordinance, you're going to have to change the ordinance.
I would suggest that the town manager get with maybe Bob, because you know what data we really need. We don't need a customer list by name. What we need is the quantity of customers they have and where they reside.
He's already given us that. He says he has twelve customers outside Castleton and Hubbardon. I mean, twelve is twelve.
Jim, I understand that, but we have to change the ordinance.
I know that.
Or we have to enforce the ordinance, which is something we really don't want to do.
Well, just remember the old adage, that ordinance or law is only as good as its administration or its enforcement. So if you're not going to enforce it, or you're not going to administer it, then you probably better not do it.
But we haven't enforced it for years, so...
Yeah.
What teeth do we have?
The teeth that you have is the same as the city of Rutland had, when they had an ordinance that you could only dump trash from the city of Rutland. And they followed a hauler who started in Ludlow, picked up in Mount Holly, picked up in Clarendon, picked up in Rutland Town, and then took it to the Rutland City Transfer Station. Next day, he was suspended, so it was enforced.
That's what our ordinance says.
I'm not saying we want to do that. We're trying to come out with an agreeable solution.
That's why I'm suggesting we change the ordinance to something we want to enforce, rather than having it exist in a form that we do not want to enforce. It's that simple, in my opinion. We'll change the ordinance.
Let's make the motion right now, we'll change the ordinance.
They withdraw your motion, second, withdraw your motion, and we'll start again.
I'll withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw my second.
They are withdrawn. Now, would somebody care to make another motion, or simply to ask the manager to try to come up with this information? What would you like to do?
Let me start this way, and then we can...and maybe the...I would like the town manager to change the ordinance to reflect the information that we really want, which...please jump in, Bob, make sure I get this right. What we really want to know is from any and all private haulers that dump at our transfer station, how many customers they have and what towns they reside in. And that's all we need.
That's all we need.
Is that a motion?
That is a...well, what I was going to do is ask the town manager to change the ordinance, present it to us at a subsequent meeting, and then we'll approve it.
And make the motion then, okay. Oh, and make the motion then.
And then we'll have an ordinance that we, A, want to afford, and B, I'll make that motion that we...
There's a motion. There's a second.
Second, Joe.
There's a second. Any further discussion? We seem to, as usual, with trash, beat on it pretty well.
Can I ask just a quick question? Is it safe to assume that you already know from the bag... the people that bring in bags, how many come from Hubbardton and how many come from the Castle?
No.
We know how many permits are... How many permits have been sold to Hubbardton and how many permits are sold to Castle? So we've got that data to look at.
We have that, but see, we don't have the commercial... We have one commercial hauler. Everybody knows who it is.
Yeah.
But we don't know if he has 100 Hubbardton and 60 Castleton or 100 Castleton and 60 Hubbardton. We don't know the tons he brings in. We don't know how much of that tons is from one town versus the other town. It would help us just to get an idea for that.
Because I already have it for the bag people, so you know how much to assess Hubbardton.
Based on those numbers, but it's a broad tonnage that we don't have.
We know the ratio of households. What we don't know is the ratio of commercial haulers.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that is agreed if we change our ordinance to give us that information. He just doesn't want to give us the information that the ordinance calls for, which is by name, who his customers are. And he doesn't want a public customer list, and I get that.
Yeah.
I understand why he doesn't want to do that.
I understand that.
Okay. Are you ready to vote on the motion instructing the manager to try to come up with that information? All those in favor?
With that?
Aye.
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 I'll help you with that, Mike, if you want to help, and I think Bob would probably be willing to do so as well.
Okay. I'm glad that that's the only thing you have in your manager's report, Mike, that required action, and it didn't get the action, but that's okay.
Well, I do want to say Merry Christmas to everybody.
That's not counting. I'll say that after.
What's that? No, it was my part.
Oh, okay.
And I want to thank the board in public for the past year. I thought this group worked really well together, and we did some good things, and I want to say thank you for the support from me and for the employees here.
So noted.
So can I drag out the manager's report one more minute, please?
Yep.
I have a question, quick one, Mike. Is the Phase 1 easement issue is still being held up because of digging a hole to check the water line?
Correct.
For Kevin Mahoney. And now it says in your report that we can't do that until spring because they won't be able to repave the wound they make in the road.
As of last week, talking to Brian Sanderson, that was correct. Today, I wrote a message out to all parties involved because I don't have the as-built plans, and I asked for those, and Jeff had them, because I want to know, is the intersection of the private water line and the town sewer line, where is it in relationship to the pavement? That's what I haven't been answered, is where is it? Because if it's not under pavement, we can dig it up and re-bury it. But if it's under pavement, unless it gets repaved immediately after it's been dug up, then Brian Sanderson won't issue the permit from V-Trans. Ken Lujie was here. I talked to him from Beldons. He said, I cannot repave it right now. The plant's not running. So he said... So for him, it's a no-go if he has to repave it. So that's where I'm at right now.
Yeah. Well, here's where I was going with this, is the Kevin and Beldons have already had... they have an agreement that whoever's fault it is is going to pay for it and get it fixed. And no matter what happens when they dig that hole, we're going to wind up with the construction easement, correct?
Say it again?
No matter what hap... After they dig that hole, no matter whose fault it was.
Yeah.
We're still going to wind up with a construction easement, correct?
That is the intent, yes.
Yes. That's the verbal commitment, at least you have, from all parties involved.
Correct.
So what would stop us from putting out bid documents on this? Or do we have to wait until the hole gets dug and we have the easement in hand before we can put out bid documents? Which means, my concern is, are we going to be able to build this in 2020, or are we going to have to wait till 2021 for a project that was designed in like somewhere around 2010?
Good question. And the answer is, we can't get the easement until he signs off on it, and we can't go forward the project until the easement's signed.
Oh, so we can't do the... Put out the bid documents or anything?
Okay. Any other questions? Mike? Is that it? Okay.
That was the only question I had on the town or the manager's report at this point.
Oh, there was one from Bob. That bin is coming out of Quaker Town, Pennsylvania. So it's 608 miles round trip. So to send our truck down there to pick it up, I wouldn't want to drive it.
No, it's not an option.
So that's why...
How's it getting here?
They're hauling. When they have enough to... When they have enough to push this way, it gets put on a truck and it'll come up here from the company.
What are they charging us for that? Here you go.
I think it was 1,200 bucks.
To bring it here and drop it off?
Yeah.
That's pretty good money?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Okay. Select Board concerns. Joe?
No concerns. I would just echo the manager's comments that I think this... I've enjoyed my time working with the board. I think we've worked well together.
Bob?
Good.
You're good. Dick?
Everybody Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. That's all I got.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Okay.
I'll throw in Happy New Year.
I only have one thing, and that is, it was brought to my attention that we are supposed to have a select board report for the town report and a manager's report, and I have suggested that, to avoid duplication, that we simply combine the two, and that hopefully Mike will generously write that, unless one of you would like to write a separate report. Anybody volunteering?
Come on. I wrote it last year, and nobody questioned it, so... But I will send it out to you after I write it so you can look at it, and that way, if something's not accurate or you don't like it...
I would move that the town manager and the select board chairman get together during the week and work on it together.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay.
Did you vote on it? Did you vote on it, Mr. Manager?
Yes, certainly.
You did? Send me an email in it, though, Mike, so we can look at it.
Yeah. I'll make sure I get sent to you guys.
I'm ready if you are, boss.
Okay. Warrants for approval.
I make a motion we approve warrant number 1123 for $54,215.71. Warrant 21219 for $1,714,285.39. Warrant 1212 for $15,244.33. Warrant 1219P for $19,151.86. And warrant 1212P for $16,725.53.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Zach?
I'll make a motion we approve warrant number 1220P for $426.30. And warrant number 1213P for $426.30. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
I recuse myself.
You're recused. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bob, I have an answer for the question you had last week.
That was...
I have an answer for you. While you guys are signing, I also... I sent an email to you guys, Joe. You asked me about building reserve stuff. Yes. So I've been working on that. I sent you what I found, and it's going to be a lengthy process, but we've got some months to work on it. There's no formula. There's not like a plug in a number. I sent you guys...
When?
To me. Before I came in. That's...
There should have been two of them. Red X's on them. Did I sign the one I shouldn't have? Yep.
You did? Okay.
They didn't exit out.
No, they did not, did they?
Uh-oh. So... It's okay. It's been repaired.
Should end up with seven, Zach.
Be sure.
Do we have any different sessions tonight being hold?
I don't have any. No.
Nothing I have... Nothing I was asking for.
Jim, I do have a question for you after the meeting. I can meet with you in your office briefly.
Pardon?
I can meet with you in your office briefly.
Yeah, sure.
Think about it a minute.
Jim, there's one... That report you had on your desk from the sewer, you had a note on it? I read through those. It was for the sort of upgrades. There's one thing I couldn't read, so I got to talk to you about that.
Okay. I'll be around tomorrow.
All right. Those are copies I sent the board for building, how to establish a building reserves.
Okay.
Capital improvement stuff.
Okay. Is there any reason... Do we have anything, a brief recap and items and sum up? How about solid waste? Do we have any more we want to talk about that?
I think we beat that pretty much just much as we needed to say.
One reading, yeah.
Is there any reason for an executive session, Mike, on anything? None?
Not on my end, maybe in yours.
Okay.
I was wondering, given our guests, whether there's any need to move any of the graves in the cemetery. Is that anything you're under consideration? Yes. I suppose that'll require an executive session.
Definitely. Heavy.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. Just one other thing?
See, I'm trainable.
Yep. One other thing. Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night. With that, there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. We are... All those in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.